Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 4th, 2025 Farmington School Board Meeting. We did open our meeting tonight at 5:30. Spent the last hour, a little over an hour, dealing with some non-public issues. Mrs. Parker is back with us. Welcome back. We're glad to have you back. I feel like our team's finally together again. At this time, I would ask that you please rise and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there any public participation at this time? Okay. And we do not have minutes tonight, correct? And well, that brings us to reports. Curriculum. Hi there. How are you?
Got some updates for you. Summer school and summer camps, just giving you a little bit of a synopsis of how many kids participated. We had some great success at the high school, so I kind of want to highlight that. We had 29 students do credit recovery. And this includes the 10 from the subscription we have to ed mentum. So... Oh, and I think it might have gone up by one today. There was one student who still had something left to do. So, we did make headway there. I believe last year, at least for the ed mentum, only two kids made it through and got the credit recovery. So, not that we want kids to have to do credit recovery. We would prefer that they do it when they... during the school year and give them that success to do that. But as a tool to get them where they need to be so they can stay with their peers and get the credits they need.
Yeah, that seems like a really high number. I'm happy to hear that.
I think everyone up there was really happy and it was very productive up there when I was there.
I mean, I'm sad that we have a high number that we have to address, but I think it's great that it has been.
Yeah. We had a good team. We had a great team working with those kids. It was good to see, and they were all so positive, the kids. They were really... didn't have attitudes. Let's see. The swinging into the summer camps has been really great. It might have bitten off a little bit more than we needed to. There were 13 camps, 52 students. Some of them were just signed up for everything. They would come in the morning for the gardening camp, and then they'd come back in the afternoon for the dance camp because it was an hour in between. And then some great field trips they were able to do. Echo Lake, White Lake, Seacoast Science Center, the Sea Center in Manchester, Butternut Fawn. They're going to the Albacore Sub on Thursday. They went on a whale watch and to the Isles of Shoals. And I'm sure I missed a couple. We also had the children's museum come in. So, a lot of enrichment. I was at... today, there's two camps running at the middle school. And the kids are just like... they had to make tide pools, and it was just really, really good. They was really having a good time. The bigger item, I guess, would be the teacher evaluation review and school administrator review. So, I don't know if you had a chance to link into those. I'll start with the comprehensive teacher evaluation, and Giselle, feel free to jump in here. She already brought this to the union. And our hopes were to get everyone in the district organized around one form and one way of doing business. So, we spent, boy, I don't know how many hours putting this together as a team. And so, if you look at the components of the evaluation, it includes an annual goal-setting form, which will include their department or team PLC goals. So, using data, some people will keep the one they had last year, but making sure that they set their annual goal, so they'll have their PLC goal as well as their professional and personal goal listed. And then we have the formal observation form, which is pretty hefty when you click in there. There's a lot to there. There's a pre-conference, there's the observation, and then there's the post-follow-up. So, there's a whole bunch of things in there. And then informal, that's a Google form where our administrators will do their quick little mini-observations, do a walkthrough, and then there'll be a summative end-of-year meeting. So, lots going on in there in terms of teacher responsibility, administrator responsibility, to get into the classroom, to help the teacher, and to bring whatever resources they need, if they need any. We laid out the whole schedule for the year on the second page. You can see we would like to get that annual goal in by October 1st, get our first informals done by October 13th. If it's an experienced teacher, November 27th. So, there's a bunch of dates in here, and I guess the thing that's most important is that the summative meeting should be completed by March 15th. So, if there's any things that are not being addressed, the principal and the teacher can make a plan to address those, get it done by the time contracts would be issued, all of that.
The challenge, it was a challenge to the administrators. Because it was difficult to get done, I wanted them to meet together and to see if they could streamline it at all because Daniel said, and this kind of is very similar to what was happening, but I wanted them to kind of own it. And so, they redid the forms with Kim, and they went through it, and they argued, and they... this is what they came up with. And then they brought it back to me for some feedback. And then I sent it out to the union leadership to ask them if they had any just thoughts on it because it is essentially the same. So, you know, I don't know... I don't think that they like needed to vote on anything, but I wanted them to be a part of it, especially with the dates. So, Kim facilitated all the meetings as far as that went, and then it came back up in the admin meetings, so.
What's the new professional development platform?
Frontline.
Frontline. Is this all like linked through frontline, like they're...
So, so the evaluations?
Yeah, just like the goal-setting, like in...
No. Do we have that part? So, I would... I only know what I was trained in for frontline.
I just know that all of ours, when we used it at Governor Wentworth, it was all right... yours too, yeah. It was all right there. So, it was just really nice because all of this was in there. So, you could send an email out, and so teachers knew it was due. And if it wasn't, you got a report on your end, knowing like this teacher hasn't submitted it, so you could get it on. So, it like just saves you like... So, I would just...
I'll email the rep.
I feel like it will make so much more... It'll be easier for the teachers and staff as well, but it's all right there. You all have access. So, then when you go to meet, you just pull it up, and it's...
Right there.
It's there.
Yeah.
Just an idea. I don't know. That's all. I don't... You should be able to, but...
All we have is a file area where they put stuff in, but it wouldn't give the alerts. It wouldn't give what you're talking about.
Maybe it's not the whole...
I don't think we have the whole package. But I can see how much the add-ons are.
Like harassment and bullying like that we had to do every year as teachers and administrators. Like, that was all in there. So, we could go in, we could watch it, we could show that we did it, completed it, signed it.
So, right now, what we have is we have the district catalog, right? Where people can select their professional development. We have forms that they fill out for college courses. All of that is in there. And then there's a file. So, say they need a receipt to go with that college class. That can be linked. But in terms of a special area where you upload that, your goals and all of the things that are due.
Yeah.
I don't think we have that. I'm pretty sure we don't. But I will check.
Yeah.
100%. Because I know at one point, we were going to expand it to also include there's a portion of frontline, and maybe you used it at your other school where you get your subs. So that if you're hiring a sub, we have the tally of who's out. So, it's all in one database. So, you're not like, oh, did the secretary write it down or not? It's like, oh, they needed a sub, they were out.
And this is great. Like, all this information was great. When I had looked at it, my question was just like, oh, like instead of having all these different forms or Googles or this, especially since we're trying to get everyone on the same page and making sure things are done, right?
Yep.
It would just be nice because it would all be like right there. So, if it's something, I don't know.
I think it's... I'll definitely look into it and see.
This is awesome, though.
If there's a cost or not associated with that, and there might be a software upgrade cost.
Yeah. Something to look into. It make... like I said, it would make everyone's life...
All right.
More convenient.
And then the... all right. So, the second thing that Giselle and I worked on is the school administrator evaluation. And this is a draft, but we really looked at the national standards. And then we looked at a variety of programs, and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had really streamlined it into these four standards, using the national standards. So, we... I mean, we read through the whole thing, and you're welcome to read through it, too. There were four categories: the instructional leadership, the management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And the rubrics, they were great. And we really want to be able to give our administrators feedback so that they can see where they need improvement or are doing exceptionally. So, this worked for us. We welcome your feedback when you have time to read through it. And let us know if there's something in there that you're like, I didn't see this. And we really want you to give feedback to the principals on X, Y, and Z. Or if you see something and you're like... because we kind of talked about the budget aspect.
Right. It didn't seem fair to, you know, have that applied to assistant principals. It just was like, that's really not applicable, so we wouldn't use that. But I do want to point out that we have not shared this with the principals yet. We kind of wanted to show you guys, and then we were going to show it to them at the next admin meeting. And even if we piloted this year, but it seems like we should have some sort of framework in place for them to be able to have a goal to work towards something and kind of know where they are.
Makes sense.
So, take, I guess, look through it and maybe get us some feedback at the next meeting or a meeting after that.
And as we're hiring administrators and you put together teams to interview, keep in mind what those four areas are.
Yeah. 100%.
That's the focus of the questioning, really.
100%. That makes good... yeah. Okay, so there's that. And then we have some upcoming workshops. We have the Project-Based Learning Workshop, August 19th through the 21st. We have our New Teacher Welcome, August 26th. We have five administrators attending the Drummond and Wilsons Principal Academy next week. And we've got some mentor assignments and training coming up on August 26th as well.
I can't believe we're already in August.
I'm sorry. All right. Grants and grant updates. Wow. This roller coaster just never ends. So, I've had to put together somewhat of a puzzle. The Title I funding, they only gave us 40% as of now. And then we don't know what our... I can guesstimate what our rollover is going to be. So, we don't have a lot of money in the kitty right now to work with. And we need... we have four reading specialists and one para. And so, I'm trying to squish all that in there. And then, and we'll talk about tiger beats in just a second. We're hoping to keep tiger beats, of course. And Title II, we have no funds awarded, no even rumors. And that's our professional development, retention of staff, and a variety of other things that are in Title II. Title IV, we were told what we were going to get. It's about $58,000. And for this year's allocation, we... it's not on the DOE webpage yet. So, they told us what we were going to get. It just hasn't showed up. So, we're working with, you know, we're trying to make everything fit into a box, as you know. I'm sure you're trying to do that yourselves. Last year's grant, the 2425, we did get some through. Maya Learning, which is a software for college and career planning, Portfolio Work, is going to be run this year for a pilot. And then the Library Expo, which is... Oh, Leslie Thurston's baby. She has created this community mapping. I think I talked to you about it before, where she's having students work with like maybe the school board or the city council or whoever, even nonprofits, and they're doing a map of what the community needs, and then they're supposed to come up with a solution. So, if they, you know, decided that it was a food scarcity or something, right? They would try to create a solution for that, or if it was water quality. And parts of this include a little bit of a maker space, so that they wanted to design-build. So, say it was insecure housing, right? Maybe they designed like a whole tiny homes village, and they are going to present that and compete at the UNH... I can't remember what it's called. Changemaker? Changemaker. UNH Changemaker thing. Thing. Thing is not part of it. Okay, so that goes through most of our grants. And then, just so you know, and you might already know, the plane materials have been arriving daily. Things are really, really moving along there. It's really exciting. Big trucks come. And I'm like, are they going to make the corner? All right. So, the last thing I want to bring up is back to the tiger beats because we have some decisions to make. So, if you want to take one of those and pass it around. And so, Giselle and I had a great conversation, and we kind of put together three different options for how we could make this all work. So, we will welcome your feedback on that. So, on the front page here is basically the program expenses. I've rearranged some things in order to save money. We have one coordinator slash supervisor at this time. And then we'll have two support teachers, and then we'll have para support. So, last year, our total salaries were about $65,000. And we're trying to like keep that as low as we can. When I put everything in, it still came out to $58,000. So, I didn't... I wasn't able to cut too much. Our proposal, one of them, or actually all of them, but we've just rearranged the funds in a little bit different way, is that the grant, I believe, can cover up to $40,000. But at this point, I've put in $37,916.94 for the salaries in the Title I grant. And I can't put any more in. Last year...
What was that number?
So, that leaves us with about a $21,000 find the money problem. If everything comes out the way I've estimated, as well as looking at last year's figures. We have plenty of supplies. There is... there will be no supplies. It is typical. It's just going to be salaries. We did get a lot of supplies that are reusable, and we have extras. So, I'm not worried about that, and we can be creative with supplies. So, the first option would be that everyone, flat fee, $20 a week, monthly, 80. Yearly would be 600. And if they paid in full at the beginning of the year, we'd give them a 10% discount. So, that's option one. Everybody pays the same. Option two, we consider our clientele and what $20 a week might mean to them, right? So, if that's the case, we would do free lunch, would be no cost. Reduced lunch would be $10 a week. And then if you didn't meet the thresholds for those, that would go up to $30 a week. So, kind of a scaled pay.
Might give some more people to actually fill out those free and reduced lunch forms, too, honestly.
All right. Then the...
Not a bad idea.
The third option... And I don't know if... I don't think we have the money, so I just threw it out there. We would supplement the $21,000 in a couple different ways. We have maybe some district curriculum funds. And then we have this Title V grant that I like to think of as bonus bucks. It's not huge. It's around $9,000. But you can move it wherever you need it. So, that rural grant paid for the summer camps this summer. So, if we don't... if we're like, okay, we can't do the summer camps next year, then I can move $9,000 to the Title I specifically for tiger beats. And that's an option.
But that would mean no summer camps.
Correct. And then we could ask others to donate or provide scholarships. I have seen a class, like a school trip form where it tells you like this is the cost of the trip, and at the bottom, you can donate for another student. I've seen that. I don't know how well that would go.
I personally like option two.
Okay.
That's just my... I think it could really encourage people to apply for free and reduced lunch, which we know we have issues with, which could then possibly lead to us not paying as much in at the end of the year for all of those people that haven't paid their lunch bills because they can't afford them.
Right.
I think it still gives everyone an opportunity to attend. It frees up or leaves that money for summer camps. I think summer is important for kids to be busy and be here if they don't have other options, especially seeing what a success it was this year. And honestly, I mean, if your family making above that threshold and you don't have the free or the reduced, I mean, you're only talking $900 a year, like for... That's cheap. That's very cheap.
And if they pay in full, we will offer them the 10% discount.
Just as a point of reference, the Farmington Parks and Rec has given us their poster to put out for after-school programming, and they are at $90 a week, and they do have part-time options available. So, it kind of puts it in perspective.
They're $90 per week.
Per week.
And this would be, well, full price.
Full price for not free and reduced would be 30.
Oh, right. Sorry. I said that backwards.
Or $4 a day if we wanted the $20 option. $4 a day.
Or $6 a day, even if it's 30. I mean, $6 a day. I mean, for... Good luck finding daycare out there for $6 a day. If you can find it, let me know.
Well, it's true.
Right. I mean, so when you put into... and then it... you still have...
And we'll put something in there, too. If you're having, you know, financial problems or... Just let us know, and we'll figure it out. I mean, we're not the Chase Manhattan Bank, but...
We could still, like, maybe there could be a scholarship program.
You could always add that as...
Like, I know a nonprofit that I'm working with right now, like Whispering Branches. I've done a ton for them to launch their new... like, they're looking for scholarships to help families and help students. And, you know, there's a lot of different... And there's plenty of people in our community, too, so...
Did you use the entire nine this summer from Title V?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You could also try to budget that.
I know.
Means nine grand.
I hear you. Well, if... was... I mean, if we do option two, the nine will still be sitting there to do something with, if you want.
I see, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know how much... There's... there might be some money left in this year's Title V.
In that $9,000, as far as the grants go, like, we don't have to worry about like the July 1, June 30th.
So, it would be... the new one we just got is 2526, and it goes for almost two years.
Okay.
So, it wouldn't expire until July 2027.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. They run almost two...
Two years, yeah.
When did the summer program start this year? What was the date that the summer programming started?
July 7th.
Okay, so you weren't... because you weren't able to use those funds till after July 1 anyway, right?
I didn't touch the new funds, and no, I wouldn't be able to. But the 2425... The funds I used were the 2324.
Is it good for two?
Yes. And I had to use those by September. And they... it was something we didn't know we had. I don't remember... I don't know if you remember this story. But I sent in a grant, and the head of... Elizabeth Clark, the head, wrote back, "Why don't you use your Title V money for this?" And I went to Mac, and I said, "What... where's this Title V?" And he said, "Well, we don't have Title V." And I said, "Well, Elizabeth Clark, she says we do, and she knows a lot." And so, sure enough, we had two grants sitting there for $9,000 each. One of them went to the summer camps because we had to use it up. I tried to use it for ed mentum for the summer work, and she said, "No, because we think you're going to use some of those licenses during the school year." She probably not wrong.
Right.
And so, we had to spend it by September 15th. And that's what we came up with.
Yep.
But it was... it's been really fun. Anyway, so the new money is sitting there untouched, unblemished. It's there if we... if you make a decision that you would prefer to use it for that.
I don't think we should put all of our eggs in one basket, though, for that funding. I think that those funds should be, if we can distribute and offer more for our students, that's my personal opinion, but...
Does the board want to motion one of the options?
I'll make a motion to go with option two. But I just want to make sure that if families pay in full, there is the discount. Just because there's no discount on here, so I just want to make sure.
I didn't know if that was for the reduced lunch.
Is that the... yeah.
I don't know.
So, the $10 for reduced lunch and the free for free lunch, right?
Under option two, under incentives, it says no discount on the right-hand side.
Yeah, there would... I guess it would be a discount for the...
For the full.
For the... yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. And that would be 10% if they pay in full.
I'll make a motion for option two.
With the 10% discount.
With the 10% discount for families above the threshold.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle. Second by Mrs. Parker. Further discussion?
Why couldn't it be for the reduced lunch as well, the discount?
Well, they're not paying any...
They could pay the 300.
Oh, for...
If I wanted to pay the 300.
Oh, I... you said reduced.
Yeah, reduced.
Reduced would be 350. I heard free.
Oh, okay. All right. I think it should be for both. I think there's a discount for both.
Okay.
So, no discount for free. I'll make a friendly amendment to that, then. 10% discount for reduced lunch and families above the threshold. So, if you're that 300 or 900, you pay upfront.
So, yeah, so it would be 270 with the 10%.
That's the new motion. Good. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And just so you know, for the... I did just look it up. For the 2425 Title V rural grant, we have used $7,000. So, we still have about $6,000 left buffer. So, barring anything else anybody like comes up with, we can probably use that, too. Because all we put in there was ed mentum, and that doesn't take up the full amount. Okay. And I think that's it. Thank you for taking care of this so fast.
And thank you for like heading up those summer camps. I mean, people don't realize like Kim was the administrator up there for summer camps. She tie-dyed with children. She did the dance camp. She was up there with them for everything, and everything you brought to the kids, it was amazing. So, thank you so much for giving these opportunities.
They're adorable.
This is what it's all about, right?
Yep.
It's more than just buying...
And to the teachers who stepped up.
Shelves. Like, this is what... yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, the teachers really stepped up, and they really enjoyed it. Someone was saying they wanted to do it something... I can't remember what they said. They said, "Oh, if I knew it was going to be this much fun, I would have done it longer," or something. It was Casey Rhodes. She really enjoyed her little book group. They made fairy houses, like, she just loved it.
That's awesome.
Great. Alright, we do have Colleen's report, but Colleen is at a conference, so she did submit a report to us. Financials.
So the financials on this month, I just put in what I had brought to the Budget Committee. And I just wanted to point out that it is looking very good that we will be able to honor that seven hundred thousand dollars. We're hoping to make that happen in maybe the middle of next, nowhere in August, to the middle of this month, towards the end. Just to be sure there aren't any surprises. But it is a financial roller coaster and, you know, you just gotta decide. One day it's looking great and then we find some other things. So it's getting cleaned up and I think the message is just keep calm and carry on. We're gonna do the best we can. We're gonna provide the children with a great education. We're gonna utilize our grant money to the best of our ability and be as transparent as we can.
And when you and I spoke with David, our MRI consultant, he concurred that the seven hundred thousand dollar transfer looks.
Looks good.
Good.
Yes. So Mary Baron, if you're out there, your baby can be fed.
Yeah, so she says. Alright, any specific questions? Thank you. New business, student mealtime accounts.
So I'd like to pass that over to Stephanie.
So I just wanted to make you guys aware that I had to zero out students' accounts for the end of the school year so that mealtime can start the process with going forward. I had to zero out a total amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents that was negative on students' accounts. That involved two hundred and forty-eight students. It varied from three cents to seven hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents. So it ranged really anywhere in between those pieces. Looking at some of the students' accounts, they kind of varied where they would, they would be free at first and then once October first hit, you're mandated by the state if you don't have a free or reduced, um, the new form, you have to make them paid. So they swapped over, which accounted for some of our kiddos' accounts. Finally, when parents got their forms in, they were, did become free, but it wasn't retroactive. So that's where some of it lied. Some of them was kiddos became homeless and nobody said anything. So we could have at that point joined them over to free right away, but because we didn't, we, they obviously incurred cost for that. With looking at it, there was approximately ten thousand dollars that is just associated with siblings. So one kiddo gets high, you've got three or four siblings in the house. More than likely, three or four siblings get a high balance as well. That involved forty-three families and a hundred kids. So that was a, a big bulk of it. I just kind of calculated between zero to ten dollars, there's about sixty-two kids. Ten to seventy, uh, ten to fifty was seventy-five kids. Fifty to a hundred was forty-two. A hundred to two hundred was thirty-eight. Twenty to three hundred was thirteen. Three hundred to four hundred was ten. Four hundred to five was six. Five to six was one and then seven hundred and more was one kiddo. So I just wanted to give you guys that information so that you knew that I did have to.
And we have, we have no way of knowing really correct if that seven hundred dollar account deficit is someone that would qualify. We don't know.
Well, you've done a lot of work to figure this out. We know whose, you know whose accounts they are. I wonder if, I know it would take a little, I know it would take time and it would, it would take a lot of work, but I wonder if we could reach out to some of those families, especially the ones that, and start with the ones that are higher to see like if there's anything we could do, like.
So I got through, I got through part of the, cause it's an eleven-page report, you know, with all of these kiddos. And I did start the process of calling these families, trying to encourage them. This was before I even started to write them off. You can go onto mealtime, pay your account off, you know. A couple did. I think I might have gotten a thousand dollars, which was great. But in turn, I mean, I didn't hit everybody just because there was so many. But like Giselle and I talked about, you know, as we had some, you know, somebody had some extra time, whether it be me or one of the other staff, if we had some extra minutes to keep calling and seeing if we can't get them to send in a check or to somehow.
Yeah, and not even necess, yeah, I mean, sending a check would be great, but I mean, like, if we have students that have a seven hundred dollar or five hundred dollar balance, like, just having that conversation with them, like making that connection, like what else do you, right? Like, do you, like, what can we do? Like, do you qualify? Like, we have to have this really like, you know, you make.
Or do the parents not know that they're, they're packing their kid's lunch and they're double dipping.
Yeah, exactly. So like, um, there were kids who had a balance and they knew they could get like the regular lunch, the regular hot lunch. And maybe their parents gave them cash to, you know, pay it off. They used the cash for the snacks.
Yeah.
And so you can, you can charge your lunch, but you can't charge the good stuff. So, you know, we had kind of had a conversation too, like, do we really need the good stuff? Like, do we really need ice cream, sandwiches? Do we really need those pieces? So we were kind of.
But then still, if you say no to the kid, the kid's gonna pocket the money.
Right, right.
I mean, could, right? Like, I mean, kids are kids.
Absolutely.
Oh, why not? Seven hundred dollars in my pocket now.
And Stephanie, you know, was talking about realistically, these phone calls need to be much earlier in the game.
Yes.
Catch them at twenty dollars, catch them at ten dollars if we can. And hey, do you know this, you know, would you like us to send home another application for free and reduced lunch? Has your situation changed? We would love to, you know, and we know.
Or can we, or can you come into the front office now that it's summer and maybe your schedule's not as crazy with work and back to school? Like, you, you know, can you stop in the SAU office and we'll help you fill it out so the form's ready to go?
That's what I was gonna say.
For October one. I'm just thinking some of those that are higher. Obviously, I know it would be a lot of work for how many families, all of them, but.
Or do we have, like, even at open house, we have, I haven't been to, have to go to one.
But we can promote it.
Yeah, just, cause then they're right there. You got a captive audience. And it's, I mean, the form doesn't take any real time to fill out. That, that could be a easy.
It's an ongoing issue in every school. And honestly, realistically, like, even though it's always available at like open houses, like you're, you're there and spending time with your kids and the people who qualify may, you know, need it, like, they might not be comfortable like filling it out in front of, you know, like, there's just so many. It's such a touchy, like, but it's important to make sure, like, that teachers are. Like, we had in every classroom, like, literally a designated area with a big sign and like the form. So if they didn't have them back, the teacher would be like, hey, go fill that out. Oh, we don't need to. Oh, no, but we still want you to.
Right.
And it caught a lot of them.
I wanna just clarify for those of you viewing from home, who Stephanie is. Because, because for those of you that tune in regularly, Taryn Hurdle is typically our recording secretary for the board. Taryn's on vacation and Stephanie Hamm has, is filling in for her tonight, doing, doing our recording of our minutes. But Stephanie has been working for the district now for a number of years and been one of Mrs. Palmeroy's admin assistants at Henry Wilson and has recently made a shift down to the SAU to be an admin assistant. Her background is in municipal finance. So we, we may be able to update you in the coming weeks as to whether or not Stephanie's gonna be doing some more of that work for us. But that was very thorough and detailed and I'm sure it took a lot of work while you're balancing all the other things you have to do. So thank you for that work. We appreciate it.
Has anybody provided donations to that app?
On the Lunch for All, we had a couple. I think we got about three hundred dollars? So I'm thinking with the start of school, we can really push that too.
And when did we launch it? Do you remember? I'm just wondering how long that.
It was pretty late.
Yeah, yeah, it was very late in the year.
Yeah, okay.
I think it'll be a good time to push that and while we have kind of a handle on what we have going on, so. And now we'll also be able to post like what we rolled off this year and let's, you know, keep it low, well, you know, from the start. So I'm glad you asked.
Thank you.
It's like you need a person designated just for that and the forms and keeping on top, it's.
We redesigned the SAU and we now have an area where Lori, who is the Power School Guru, has, gonna set up a kiosk for any parent that can't do the online forms, can come in and sit with her and I'm sure we can use that area as well for people to fill out forms, so.
That's great. That's a good idea.
All good stuff.
Hmm, it's great stuff. Alright, thank you. Employee handbook.
It's just in your board folder. You wanted two weeks, so I was thinking for the eighteenth. I put in the version that everybody looked at and so all of the admin looked at it. There is a change that's probably gonna be needed for longevity for admin assistants that wasn't put in. And I believe you guys had done that last year.
Yeah, it was specific to one particular employee that happened to qualify for. But it would be for anyone else that eventually does too.
And so you'll see the yellow is the things that have changed.
Yeah.
And then the red, I ran it by legal.
Right.
So the, the red are some edits from them.
And I would just say that based on one of our non-public conversations earlier tonight, depending on, we're gonna get some numbers from Stephanie on that to look at. That will probably have to be in there too, so. So it's with us. We're just not gonna act on anything tonight.
Just a first read and, and kind of get your feet wet with it, see if there's, if it looks okay. And then any edits you want, let me know. And then for the next time, I was hoping we could vote on it for then. And then that would be for the beginning of school.
Yep, yep. Technology.
Um, I just met with Mainstay. Lori Shagnon and I met with Mainstay. And there's a bunch of things going on. One of the things is the Windows eleven is going to be obsolete. So Mainstay is working with.
We need a correction from Mr. Henry.
Yes, Mr. Henry?
Windows ten will be obsolete.
Okay. Okay, so we gotta go to eleven. We do have some machines that can't run it. So they're going through it and we're making decisions on whether or not they're needed. And so we have some desktops that could replace some of the things we have. But basically the all-in-ones are about done. And so that may be something that we'll look to put in a budget for next year, but this year, no. Then it was Windows, oh, Microsoft three sixty-five. They're gonna get a refreshed quote on this. It's very expensive to have Microsoft three sixty-five on everything that we have. And so that would be that whole Microsoft suite. But not everyone needs Word, PowerPoint. So what we were thinking was that the SAU staff and administration, we, we would continue to offer Microsoft three sixty-five to them. But for the teachers, we want them to transition to the Google Suite. So, um, cause it would save us a lot of money. And then we are going to try to get our house in order. One of the Mainstay engineers is going to come in and analyze what we really need from a security standpoint and to optimize the network and make sure that, you know, if you were on the guest network, you couldn't access anything with personnel or student files and so forth. So they're gonna take a good look at that and they're anticipating that to be a couple of hours. We're working with TASTA because we will be getting those devices passed out this year, so we're very excited about that. And then making sure that the, um, network and stuff consisting in that. And so by and large, the devices that the teachers and parents would have will be on our wifi. Bus drivers, we would get SIM cards and administrators, they would be using their TASTA device on wifi, but then their district cellphone would have the TASTA app on it. So they would switch to that if they had to change locations. And let me look Jared because they do a really nice job on sending over information on like our monthly, what's happening. So this month, thirty percent hardware issues, twenty percent software, five percent net, network connectivity, fifteen percent login issues, ten percent classroom support and general maintenance was twenty.
That's where they're focusing their time.
Yep, I like that.
Yep. And I love that, you know, they have tickets to back up everything. So, good.
Alright. Public participation. Before we close out here, is there another personnel that you wanted to discuss with the board about another member position at the SAU? That I would be stepping out for?
Yes.
Was that tonight?
No, but it can be.
Oh, no.
I would just assume.
I, I assumed it was tonight. Sorry.
Yeah, I would, I would, I mean.
And I forgot as we were coming out of non-public earlier.
But yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would.
Okay. What we'll do is we'll have Mrs. Lozay run that non-public as the vice chair. Full disclosure, it's my sister that has that position that you're gonna discuss, so I would step out of that obviously.
We did connect, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
And Giselle had also gone over, she had sent us the policy pieces. So there are a few policies, AI in schools, cellphone, RSA and the Parent Bill of Rights that need to be revised and/or updated. So if we could put that out as a.
First read.
Maybe as a first read.
Yeah, I can stick it in this folder and next folder.
Well, the AI is the new one, right?
Yep.
So that would have to be a first read. But the cellphone and Parent Bill of Rights, are those both new or those?
I think the Parent Bill of Rights is, I'm not sure though.
Did you, or you just sent it to them?
No, I sent it to them.
It's revised.
It's revised. So, okay, but if we wanna just put them on, I think it would be a quick, like either first read or we could even just look at the edits for the revisions, if you wanna have those ready for the next meeting that we can be done and have it off here.
Alright, well, um.
Thank you.
We are, our next school board meeting will be August fourth, excuse me, August eighteenth at five thirty. We will also have a public hearing that evening and that public hearing will be posted soon. And I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session four under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two A, B and C for personnel. So moved by Mrs. Lozay, second by Mrs. Johnston. Thank you to those of you who joined us this evening from home. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.